I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. Can we have a moment of silence to keep our troops in our prayers that they come home safely and all our law enforcement officers come home safely? Thank you. Salute to the flag.
Salute to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the written justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Here.
Freeholder Bellante?
Here.
Freeholder Kenny?
Freeholder Nara?
Here.
Freeholder Tamara?
Here.
Freeholder Valenti?
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Here.
For the record, Freeholder Kenny is here?
Has arrived.
Recognitions?
First is recognizing South Brunswick police officers Salvatore Fama and Brian Luck on their heroism, next is declaring December 21st, 2016 as Homeless Person Memorial Day in Middlesex County, and last is recognizing Antonio Lombardi as he attains Eagle Scout status.
Is there a motion to adopt some more?
Okay.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Here, yep.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, I would like to call up to the podium over here, Officers Salvatore Fama and Officer Brian Luck, and Freeholder Nara, I'm sorry, I'm combining both here. We felt that it was important to bring these police officers to our meeting. You know, sometimes our law enforcement officers get a bad wrath, and I have to say 99% of the time, we have great police officers in law enforcement, and these guys stepped up to the plate and went above and beyond the call of duty. They are from South Brunswick, and they responded to a call of a man having difficulty breathing at PSS warehouse office, where a coworker started giving them, having chest pains, and they started giving the patient chest compressions. And then Officer Fama applied a defibrillator and provided one shock, and Officer Luck arrived and continued with CPR. Without their quick thinking and jumping right into the scene, this person would not be alive. So, on behalf of Middlesex County Freeholders and Middlesex County residents, we want to thank you for your quick thinking and your heroism, and yes, you are heroes, because you know, you just thought about it like that and you just went right into action real quick. Thank goodness for your training, training is so important, and in your careers, number one, always stay safe, be careful, and keep up on your training, and I'm sure you will have a real great future career in law enforcement. Thank you very much. Shantae Nara.
The only thing I'm going to add is that everybody knows that you protect, but the serve part, this is exactly what it means, and the instinctual reaction as the Freeholder Director mentioned, that is a testament to how well you guys paid attention in your trainings. So, thank you both on behalf of the resident and the rest of the residents of the county.
Thank you so much.
Director, may I get my picture taken with South Brunswick?
South Brunswick.
These are my boys.
Look at that.
Wish you some flats on your ship.
I'd make sure we get a lot of those, but I had to show my outfit.
Thank you, Ken. Would you like to say something?
Thank you.
Officers, would you like to say something?
No, I just thank you guys for having us, I really, this means so much, you don't understand, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. We have correspondence?
Each clerk, I mean each Freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's Office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valenti, second by Freeholder Tamara, in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Reports of Freeholders, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Office of Culture and Heritage, East Jersey Old Town Village at Johnson Park, Piscataway, last Sunday featured seasonal traditions, holiday programs, Step Back in Time, and the celebration of the 350th anniversary of the founding of Piscataway Township. Over 700 visitors experienced horse and carriage rides, historic holiday story tales, and song about the most wonderful time of the year. Piscataway community volunteers and Girl Scouts joined in to lead craft projects for children while the entire village was open and decorated for the holiday season. From Middlesex County Vocational and Technical Schools, the East Brunswick campus, our vocational students are taught to identify a problem and seek a solution, which is just what pre-engineering students did when they developed a device to help a disabled man play fetch with his service dog. The device enabled the man to toss a ball from his wheelchair for the dog to retrieve. All aspects of their shop were utilized, including other campus shops that assisted with machine tool technology, building services, and digital film, which is making a documentary about the project. The students are now working on an improved version for canine companions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Deputy Director Kara Bellante.
Thank you. As Freeholder liaison to the Middlesex County Open Space and Recreation Public Advisory Committee, I am happy to bring to you up-to-date on a few open space and farmland preservation items. The county currently has two active farmland preservation applications. JB Heatherwood Farms is a 22-acre farm in Monroe Township and is currently in the survey phase. We anticipate closing on this farm in early 2017. The second application, the estate of Anthony Zambicki Senior, is a 36-acre farm also located in Monroe Township. The State Agricultural Development Committee, that's SADC, is currently reviewing the application that was submitted by the county, which is conducting due diligence. As we move into 2017, I look forward to reporting on additional acquisitions through our open space farmland preservation programs, so we may continue to improve the quality of life for our residents. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Director. The only report I have tonight is that we are into the holiday season, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever holiday you may celebrate, and you have a joyous time doing it. Let's just remember that it's the season of peace and being good towards others, so instead of being worried about getting the latest gifts or the best gifts, let's try to give just some peace and joy to one another. Maybe let somebody in if you're out on the road and traffic's kind of heavy, maybe you know, just to open a door for somebody, some very random acts of kindness can go a long way. And I think after the year that we've had this year, spreading peace and joy and helping one another and just looking out for each other is the best gift that you can give. So, that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder Shantae Nara.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. I have a few things to report on. First, in 2016, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, a state-accredited law enforcement agency, under the guidance of Sheriff Mildred Scott, held two sheriff's civilian academies. The civilian academy is designed to educate Middlesex County residents on the various functions and duties of the sheriff's office. The academy includes sessions on defensive tactics, canine operations, aspects of transportation, courts, civil process, and foreclosure proceedings. The two academies were attended by 66 Middlesex County residents who provided excellent critique of the overall program. A special thanks to Sheriff Scott and her staff for conducting these academies. The Division of Solid Waste Management and Environmental Health, over the calendar year of 2016, conducted the following events held throughout the county's municipalities. They held five household hazardous waste drop-offs, which were conducted at various locations in the county. Over 4,000 residents utilized these drop-off sites, which generated over 419,293 pounds of hazardous materials for proper disposal. They also held 18 paper shred events, which were coordinated over the year. Over 6,000 of our residents utilized these opportunities to recycle 301,730 pounds of paper. And on November 5th, 1,089 residents brought electric waste, which included such items as televisions, computers, and the like. The total amount of waste that was collected was 124,058 pounds, and this filled six tractor-trailers. The Clean Communities is a cooperative initiative with the Middlesex County Adult Corrections Center, the Division of Solid Waste Management, and the county's municipalities. This program is comprised of four to six inmates, as well as two corrections officers, and these details, on a rotating basis, as long as weather permits, go to towns' public works three times a week, to a park or beach once a week, and a county roadway on the last day of a five-day work cycle. The project for 2016 commenced on May 2nd and ended recently on November 11th. The crews collected 5,112 bags of garbage, numerous truckloads of leaves and other associated debris. These programs continue the commitment of this board to provide county residents with a safe and clean environment. And in closing, I just want to echo Freeholder Kenny and wish everyone and their families a very happy and healthy holiday season, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Tamara.
Thank you, Director. I had the opportunity this weekend on Sunday to stop by our ice skating rink in Roosevelt Park, and it was really nice to see so many young people and older people out there on the rink and enjoying it, and also, it was a birthday party and a lot of different abilities out on the rink, so it's really nice to see it being utilized. So, you know, check out our website for days we're open and go out and utilize it. You don't have to wait for the cold days like today for that pond to freeze over in Roosevelt Park. You can go when we're open and get out there and enjoy it. I too want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa. But also, I would like to express to everybody, if you have the means, you know, find the local food pantry, donate, you know, whether it's a non-perishable item or a toy. You know, this year, you know, at this time of the year, they're really in need of those types of items. I know the food pantry that I'm involved in last year, we gave out toys to over 300 children, and each one got three toys. So, that's 900 toys that you have to, you know, have donated, and it's not never easy to have, you know, to get them donated. So, you know, if you have the means, go out and do it and help another person out there. That's the best gift you can ever give. Thank you, Freeholder Director.
Thank you, Freeholder. Thank you, Freeholder Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Department of Community Services, earlier this month, the Middlesex County Board of Chosens Freeholders issued a proclamation in honor of National Impair Driving Prevention Month. I'd like to bring attention to this issue and share one of the county's key programs working to address it. Every day in America, 27 people die as a direct result of drunk driving crashes. Middlesex County is an important partner in the effort to make our roadway safer by promoting awareness and prevention of driving under the influence, educating convicted impaired drivers, and when appropriate, referring them to treatment. The Middlesex County Intoxicated Driver Resource Center provides an education and screening program for approximately 1,780 convicted drunk drivers annually, a mandatory program that saves lives and reduces DWI's throughout the county. In addition, the IDRC monitors the treatment progress of county residents previously convicted of driving under the influence. The Board of Freeholders is committed to supporting the IDRC, along with our other education, prevention, and treatment efforts to reduce the incidence and potentially devastating impact of impaired driving. On December 21st, along with the City of Perth Amboy, GOS Army Ministries of New Jersey, and many other homeless service providers and advocacy organizations, the Board of Chosens Freeholders will hold an event to honor and memorialize all those who have died homeless in 2016. The event has been held on the first day of winter, the longest night of the year annually since 1990, in an attempt to symbolize the harsh elements of winter that threaten homeless persons' health and lives. I hope that the event will raise awareness of our homeless citizens and of those people who die from exposure, illness, and hate crimes, and that it acts as a call to action to help those in need. This memorial will begin at 6:00 PM on December 21st at the Perth Amboy Train Station at 249 Smith Street. Donations of new men's and women's coats, hats, gloves, and warm socks will be collected. And I want to join my colleague, Ms. Charlie Kenny, in wishing everyone a wonderful holiday and be safe, and may the New Year bring you prosperity, good health, and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments to make. Yesterday, I attended a press conference in Newark that was attended by the Lieutenant Governor and the DEP Commissioner, and the state was giving out awards, grant awards to the Passaic Valley River damages that were done to polluters that polluted the land around there. Carteret was one of the towns in Middlesex County, and also the county of Middlesex, we received a grant in an amount of $1.3 million that we made an application for, and we are using that for our park, our future park that will be in Perth Amboy. I also would like to join my colleagues in wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, a healthy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, a safe holiday season. Remember those that are less fortunate than us, and you know, we were able to end homelessness for veterans. Hopefully, one day, we'll be able to end homelessness, period, for anyone in Middlesex County. And I just wanted to remind everybody also, that January 4th will be our reorganization meeting at the County College at 6:00 PM. Okay, Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I'd like to open a meeting up to the public on discussion on any resolutions listed on the agenda. State your name and address, you have five minutes.
Good evening, sir. My name is Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, a community newspaper here in the hub city. I have a few questions. The first one is on 1937, it's $1.93 million, or billion, million, $1.93 million being canceled from a bond issue. Can you tell me what the purpose is? Is this normal?
We had back in January, voted to refinance 30 million in debt. We were able to finance at lower rates, up to the, about 28.1 million, so we're canceling out the refinancing of the 1.9. Am I correct, Joe?
Thank you very much. Next one is 1940, on the next page, $3 million added to the operating budget of the MCIA. What's the purpose of this? Why is this necessary in December?
Is additional cost incurred for the Roosevelt Facility due to the phase in two facilities?
I'm sorry.
I'll just add to that, as you recall, we have closed the original Roosevelt facility in Edison. It went from 510 beds to 360 beds. As part of that, it was a transition from what the cost standpoint of closing the facility and migrating to the two, this is the final payment to cover those transition costs over the last two years.
Okay, and I guess my question is, why is this only happening now? I mean, this has been in the works for some time. Why wasn't this budgeted in the original budget?
It was budgeted, and what we're doing now is that each year, we subsidize the long-term care facilities to tune about $7.6 million. We recognized in that process that there was additional cost of transition, and now that we've closed out the long-term care building in Edison, this was the final payment towards that means.
This is the final payment, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to comment briefly on 1942, the bottled water for the facilities here. I think that if the drinking water that comes out of the fountains is safe, there's not really a need for $30,000 worth of bottled water. I'd also suggest that there are, you know, Nestle is a particularly bad company to be doing business with, and I think if you research it, you'll see that they're not the type of people that Middlesex County wants to be associated with. If you share their values, I'm sorry for you, but I don't think that we actually do, and I don't think that we actually have a need for bottled water. So, I would advise that the county hold that and not buy bottled water unless there's a real need for it. Is there a need for bottled water in this building, or I don't understand why the water that comes out of the fountains is insufficient.
It's for other employees in the public. It's been a past practice relative to services provided to our employees, as well as visitors in the building, that we offer bottled water as a service, and I believe, as far as Nestle, that is by bid, is it not? So, it starts a contract, we have no choice, have to go to a little bit.
Understood, and so, as a visitor to this building, where can I get my bottled water?
At any one of the locations within the county office of the Clerk of the Board, there's a bottled water container right in the little cafeteria right here.
Okay, because as a visitor, without knowing this, I would probably be drinking out of the fountain.
Anytime you'd like some water from the Nestle Water Fountain, water will all get to you.
Okay, and I'm just curious, though, the water that comes out of those fountains is okay to drink, though? The water that comes out of those fountains has been tested, right? I've asked before, it's been tested, it's okay?
You asked that question before, already we answered that.
Okay, it just sends a mixed message when the county's spending $30,000 on bottled water in a facility that supposedly has acceptable clean tap water. That's my concern. 1956, the Bike Way Project, is that completed yet? Or, I don't understand, is this the final change order, or can we expect more?
It is not the final change order. We're in the process of bylaws, I think there were some issues we haven't cleared. This was one of them with the state DOT and a electrical high voltage proximity clearance.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'll skip a couple and follow up later, but the 1977 meeting has to be held on January 19th in this room regarding the Perth Amboy Waterfront Park recreational development application. I assume, one, that's connected to what you were just talking about, Mr. Freeholder Director?
Yes.
Okay, and what time is that meeting?
Rick?
That meeting will be here, it'll be part of, it'll be at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM on January 19th, and that's regarding the Perth Amboy?
It'll be part of our regular Freeholder meeting.
Oh, it'll be the regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay, understood, and so there'll be a hearing on this application there.
That's time.
Okay, great, I look forward to that hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Move the close the public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. At this time, is there anyone that needs to vote on anything separately on any of the resolutions?
I do, Director. 16-1936.
1936. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 16-1920 through Resolution 16-2034 excluding Resolution 16-1936 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Freeholder Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Tamara, and that's Resolution 16-1936.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Armwood, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
This time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on anything that anyone would like to discuss. State your name for the record and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening once again, it's me, Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I want to begin by wishing you all a very happy holiday season and look forward to the next year. Just a couple of questions tonight. I want to ask about the visitation at the Middlesex County Jail. Does the county jail offer in-person visitation still? Or do you have, are you subjected to having to do video visitation only now?
The jail orders of in-person visits once a month.
Once per month?
Every month.
Okay.
In addition, we offer video visit.
And how long has that been going on, the new video?
Video visits, I believe, for 10 years.
10 years? Okay, and the in-person is going to continue for the foreseeable future? There's no plans to eliminate video, or eliminate in-person visitation? Okay, and in the past, I've discussed with the warden, the, you know, improvements to the phone system at the jail and the ways for inmates to communicate with the outside world. Where are, where is the facility at on making those improvements that have been discussed?
So, I think we've discussed that, but 2016, we did the jail network system, we did electronic health records, and we did medical methods that became big second items for the year. 2017, we're moving towards increasing technology in the facility, looking for ancillary visits, looking for kiosks in the housing areas, looking for access, it did need freezers, kiosks for the library, for possibly email, and different kinds of communication to the public. So, that's a big priority for this year coming up, and that's what we're working on.
Okay, thank you. Can we expect that to be accomplished within 2017? Is that the timeframe, or?
Yeah, that's the goal.
The goal, to get it done in 2017? Okay, thank you. And the one last thing I want to ask about is the Ford Avenue site in Milltown. There was, you know, a transformer oil spill there. I've asked about it before, hoping that I can get some more answers now that more time has passed about the impact of that spill and what's being done about it.
Nikki?
Sir, if pending litigation is just fine by the place of counsel, you're not allowed to discuss this since it's pending litigation.
Well, that's very interesting. Can you tell me what litigation that is? Who's suing who?
I would prefer to talk to the county counsel about this.
Okay.
Well, there's claims that are being made between the property owner, and also claims for them and their subcontractor, not necessarily directly engaged with the county, but I know that the state has been engaged and our office has been engaged in monitoring and reviewing whatever the impact was on the waterfront.
So, was the Lawrence Brook contaminated by this spill?
To define what contamination is, I believe there was an impact, but I believe it was minor, from, basically, from what I understand, it was minor and has been remediated, or is in the process of being remediated, by the offenders, which wasn't related to the county at all.
Understood, and that's what I want to understand. Is it done being remediated yet, or is it still in the process?
I believe it is, yes.
You believe it's done?
I believe it has been finished, yes.
Okay, and is there a date that it was done, or?
Don't know the answer to that. Don't know the answer to that.
Okay, do you know if the city of New Brunswick is drawing water from that source?
I don't know the answer.
That's three miles downstream from that?
Don't know the answer to that.
Contamination? Okay, well, I, you know, I think it goes without saying why I'm concerned about this. I hope that the Freeholders and everybody else who's watching can get the information that we need to find out about this accident, and, you know, gosh, I really hope it never happens again. There's got to be lessons that we can learn to keep this from happening again, and so if the contractor that was involved was a bad contractor, maybe we can create processes so that we don't pick a bad contractor again.
Well, let's clarify that. The county had nothing to do...